To the leaders, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ed, you requested to be on the agenda? I said you, are you ready? You requested to be on the agenda?
Ah, thank you, but I hear from the grapevine my bid was rejected, right?
Yep.
Along with the second low bid, is that correct?
Um, I believe the second low bid was the one that we accepted, I believe, wasn't it?
I wasn't at that meeting when the bids were accepted.
Well, I talked to them, Dennis Trucking was second.
Okay, well, then, yeah, we-
Who'd you take? I don't know.
Uh, McCullough.
That comes as no surprise, but anyway, what was the reason for mine bid exactly?
Well, uh-
And then?
The, uh, the engineer, I mean, he looked over everything. He said there was some paperwork shortages on, on, I think, five of the seven. Um, I don't recall what it was, it was a state, a state document, wasn't it, Jeff?
Yeah, State 496, and then on Dennis Trucking, there was, you know, I'm trying to do that memory. There was something else that was missing on theirs.
But I only missed one thing? You read your documents, number one, you said a ninety-six, right?
Yes, State 496.
Part one or two, what part was missing?
I couldn't, uh-
That's what I need to know. Now, you read your specs, it says a hundred and fifty thousand, alas, it's not needed. Right here in your specs.
Okay.
Now, the further states that the bidder is responsible, you shall assume all risk or error. Now, how can a bidder, any bidder, assume risks or errors when you don't get a complete set of plans and prints?
Well, here's what I can tell you about that. You got the same set of papers that everybody else did.
That's what I was wondering.
And you got the same thing.
And definitely didn't, for what reason? The low bidder must have had it all, right?
Uh, no, I guess there were other people that had complete paperwork too.
I ain't saying they didn't, but-
But, I mean-
Dennis told me it wasn't in his bid pack. I just got off the phone with him before I walked in here. Now, another thing, most jobs, this is available. For some reason, this was not available. I've never bid a job off the internet for that reason. Any other job, even says you complied with the disability law, which you did. But bound set was not available for some reason. That's what I'd like to know why not.
What kind of document is that?
Pardon?
What kind of document is that right there?
Big job in Clinton, another engineer designed it.
Okay.
I just deal with this lady, and didn't we get bound sets of prints on that job?
You could request them, yes.
That's right, thank you. Now, for some reason, we wouldn't- Does the equal opportunity law apply to this job, the EO federal law? Huh?
All of them do.
That's what I thought. Nowhere in there did I see that. I don't think everybody has an equal opportunity on this.
You got the same set of documents that everybody else got. As far as I can tell, that, that's, that was the case.
But we did all have a check. If you had this, you would have noticed. It's all right in here.
Did you make a written request for a paper?
What's that?
Did you make a written request for a bound set of those? Cause we're not required to produce those unless there's a written request for them.
A written request?
Right. Did you make a request for a document?
I didn't see that, but I'm not saying it wasn't in, I looked at this newspaper ad and it wasn't in there.
Right, but what I'm asking though, is did you request it though? Because we don't have to provide unless somebody requests them.
If you read this first page right here, it says you could get it any way, paper bound or like, um-
Right, but you have to request it, paper bound.
It says right on the advertisement, you go to Rapid Reproductions in Terre Haute. They'll pr- you pay for it.
Right, but that's why I'm asking, did you ever ask anywhere to produce that for you?
Well, when I come over here, Brittany told me that Jeff's taking care of it.
Sure.
And I don't remember if I asked him or not. But I've never seen a job where you were denied a bound day, or Mr. Brown is the contractor, he knows what it's all about.
Right, but what I, I'm not saying is that there, if you ask for it, you can't get it, but I'm asking if you ask for it, cause you're not denied unless you ask for it.
Nowhere in their instruction does the bidder say it's available on the newspaper.
Right, but did you ask for one though?
Well, I'll be honest, I ain't gonna lie to you, I don't remember.
Okay.
Only thing she told me, the paper says to come to her office.
Sure.
She's been very polite and helpful, I'll give her a hundred percent. She sends me to Jeff, Jeff, I forgot what she said. Did you make it or did the engineer make it?
Yeah, it's a standard template that we do for bids from the engineer. And he developed all the text, tech specs and everything like that, which is exactly what I sent you. I sent you a copy of the general construction contract, which is about the eighty-four page long dude. And then I sent you a contract specific for this job, and there was a set of tech specs and a site plan. And those were all the documents that I sent out to everybody.
Oh, I'm not saying you didn't, Jeff. I have no problem with you, you've been there with me from last year when this started. But what I'm saying, I did not receive a full set of documents. Furthermore, the specs read, you could waive this if it's under a hundred and fifty thousand. You didn't even have to bid it, you know that. You could have got three proposals.
We can waive it, but we don't have to, we're not required to waive it.
That's right, but I would think the best interest of the town is low dollar, not who does the job.
Well, if you read the statute, it doesn't necessarily even say they have to accept the lowest dollar.
That's true, I agree with you.
They, they can weigh the bids based upon the completion and the specificity-
But what you're saying, money don't matter. What matters is who does the job, it looks like.
Well, the statute says that, is all I'm telling you. The statute says that you can weigh it based upon the specificity of the proposal tendered by the contractor. So you don't necessarily have to accept the lowest bid just because it's the lowest bid, they're not necessarily apples to apples. So one bid could have more detail and be better put together than another bid could be. And that can be one reason under the statute that you don't accept the lowest bid.
Now, the common thing on demolition is getting rid of the demolition material. Do you know where this is gonna go?
It's going wherever the contractor, based on what they bid it and what the engineer agreed to.
It better not, it better go to a legal landfill.
That's on them, that's their requirement.
Most responsive bidder, who owns two landfills? I do. Plus, I'm a contractor and I'm right next door. Now, like you're telling me, that's non-responsive.
I, I'm not telling you anything, I'm just telling you what the statute says. I'm just the attorney for the town, I have no vote here whatsoever, sir.
But why waste our time if you don't want low bid? That's my main question.
They want as many bids as possible so they can pick the best, lowest, most responsive bidder. So the more bids, the better. The more bids you get, the better chance at a good price with a good bidder with good detail, I would assume.
So twenty-seven hundred dollars difference saving to the town don't mean nothing to you?
Again, I don't have a vote. I'm just responding to the questions you've asked me.
Your what?
I'm just responding to the questions you've asked me. I don't have a vote as, I don't get to vote on who gets awarded anything.
I've been doing this for fifty years, this is the only place, this would not, this would have been a big winner any other town. For some reason, this is the only place that's a big loser.
I, I-
Like I told the lady, if we're not welcome here, tell me, I won't never come back.
I hope that's not the case.
I will give a damn. All the thing I'm asking for is fair treatment, and I do not believe this complies with the equal opportunity law.
How so?
Huh?
How so?
What I just told you.
About the packets not being given to you that you didn't request? But you said yourself you didn't necessarily request one.
The definition of what you said, the most responsive bidder. I've been in business fifty years, Dennis Trucking's been in sixty-five, and both our bids were denied. And you could have waived that clause if you wanted to save twenty-seven hundred dollars.
Again, you, you can waive it, you're not required to waive it.
Right, I agree with you.
And then the definition of most responsible, best bidder is something that has to be determined by whoever's handing out the contracts, it's not determined-
So it's more of a personality contest than more or less?
Well, no, you don't have the benefit of seeing everybody's bid and everybody's response to what was requested.
Experience over the years don't matter, huh?
Not necessarily. I mean, there can be people, like, I do a lot of law, and there's people that have been attorneys for fifty years that I wouldn't necessarily say are the best attorneys you could possibly hire.
Well, did you read the, did you look at the bids?
No, our engineer reviewed our bids.
Did you see where my bottom company said they'd give you two and a half million if you owned it?
Our engineer reviewed the bids.
Well. Well, anyway, would you please put in writing why my bid was denied? That's what I want.
It didn't meet the requirements of what was requested, it doesn't have the form in there that we requested.
You won't do it?
I just told you what it was. This is on a recorded record. It didn't meet the requirements that we requested, it didn't have the form that was requested.
Well, all I want is an answer why my bid was denied in writing.
Well, I don't think I'm required to do that. I think I just gave you a verbal response.
I didn't think you would.
Well, I think this verbal response is everything we need.
We wasted two weeks of our time and money trying to give you a bid in good faith and honesty. And you won't even give me a reason to deny on the bid.
I just gave you a denial reason. That was the recommendation of our engineer, was that it didn't meet the requirements that were requested as part of the bid process. I can't help it if you don't like the answer.
I think this ain't too hard to figure out. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome, and, thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Yep. Ah, let me dig out my stuff here. You know, pass these around and down. I've got a pretty good list on there, but I'll try to go through them fairly quickly. If you wanna go through them, see something in more detail, just holler. Item number one, we've talked about, I did meet with Butch Crossley last week, he's one of the top dogs for Milestone. And Doug and Keith and I kinda picked his brain on road treatments, because we've noticed some of those roads that we've done, you know, about four years ago or so, were starting to show some wear and tear already, and we were a little bit concerned about that. So, we, we talked to Butch and kinda got some ideas from him on maybe doing a little less milling, a little bit more asphalt on top. There's some other places where you can obviously see where mud's coming up through, and that's gonna require some base work, where we're digging out. Kinda like what N-Dog did up here at Jefferson Street, when they did the repaving right by the intersection. They dug down about two or three feet, repacked with base and everything like that, so. That, that may be an option on some of the things we need to, but I appreciate Butch coming over and talking to us and working with us to try to come up with some things that are gonna last. Impala pole replacements are ongoing, cemetery mowing, I met with Billy Bettis and he gave me an estimate for mowing both cemeteries. It was pretty costly, I think for, it was like four thousand dollars each time that he mowed both cemeteries. And then I asked him also for just the weed eating, and the weeding was fifteen hundred ninety dollars. And that was bi-weekly, each cemetery. So you figure thirty, about thirty mowings a year, you're looking at about forty-five thousand dollars just for the, just for the weed eating. And that's, I don't know if we have the, the money to do that, but anyway, I appreciate it.
Just for the weeding?
Just for the weeding.
That was fifteen ninety, you said bi-weekly for both cemeteries?
Fifteen ninety, both cemeteries, all, that's doing all the headstones, trees, fences, monuments, et cetera. It says, I talked to Billy, he says he figures about thirty mowings a season. He doesn't do it by contract as far as a set number, it's just more or less, you know, if he gets a drought, obviously, he's not gonna be mowing that much, but if we have a year like, while we did this last year, it's a heck of a lot more.
So you'll entertain the notion of somebody giving you weed eating bids?
I would. I, I just, I don't know that we can afford it, honestly. What are your thoughts on it?
Well, it needs to be done, we're struggling getting it done, so, I mean, I, you know, whether we get part-time help or, or contracted, or. I mean, I have, they're the only two solutions I know of. I mean, anybody else got anything that, Ken?
The one thing, I don't blame you if you work in Indiana, but we use it quite a bit in Florida, we get a Boko rain, and that grass grows six inches a week, is growth inhibitor on some places we would spray, and it reduces especially rough cutting and stuff like that. You, you can spray on bushes that you have to trim, maybe down once every six weeks instead of every three weeks. You can put on grass, like in driveways and stuff like that, where it keeps that, that growth down to a minimum. You can probably check through, uh, roll cans or like that, if they, if they even sell to Indiana.
I think you've mentioned that to me before, it rings a bell.
You just cut down the weed eating, that's, that's the biggest, that's part of it. Or temporary visas. If you're in a family, you can have it.
You want me to table this for the time being and we can kinda get back to it?
Yeah, yeah.
What was the mowing price?
The mo- I'll give you a copy of this, so you can have it. The mowing was four thousand fifty dollars.
So the weed eating, if we just did the weeding, it'd be probably like eighteen thousand?
It'd be thirty times, about thirty times.
Well, he's doing it every other week, he said.
Yeah.
So twice a month for about six months.
Yeah.
So twelve-
It's still pretty good.
At fifteen hundred.
I'll let you go. What I'll do is I'll make copies and then forward you a, an email so that you can have this to look at. So, I just got that from him this evening.
How long did it, I mean, do you have an idea what it took for us to do it, as far as time?
We've, well, depending on how many people that I've pulled out there. If I had six people out there, I could do a cemetery in a day pretty easy. Probably about five hours worth, I think, with six people, which would be thirty minute hours. Obviously, if you had just three people out there working, which would be a part-time staff, it'd be what, ten hours?
Two days?
Two days. So, I mean, it, it could be done. It just makes it hard. Nobody likes being on the wrong end of weed eater, that's for sure. Trust me, I know. I talked to Billy a little bit more, and if you would like for me to put together a bid package for that, we can do that also. But we can discuss it later if you'd like. Supplemental contract signatures, I talked to Dave about this, I think we, we already have the South Market, but we need the Jefferson Street one approved for the supplemental contract for Structure Point. Yeah, do you have a copy of that, Brendan?
It's just, it's finished. He has it done and signed, and I'll get it to Ken Olson as well.
Okay, thank you so much. Salary schedule for part-time workers, if we go that route, I, I'd like to have a lead part-time worker and pay them eleven fifty an hour, and then two regular part-time workers at eleven dollars an hour. There's a little bit of an increase, an increase of a dollar for one position, and I think the other, what we have, we had two positions at ten, or one position at ten fifty and the others were ten, I think, or were there two ten fifties? There used to be two ten fifties.
In last year's, I think they were all at ten fifty.
Okay.
On the salary ordinance.
Okay, and so that'd be a fifty cent increase in one, in two positions and a dollar increase on the other. But again, we can wait on that until we make a decision on our-
How do you guys feel? Well, I mean, I would rather have the full board on that, myself, just, I mean, if you guys wanna make a motion on it, we can do it, but I, I mean, you know, we've got another meeting Thursday. I think we can take care of this pretty quick, so. So you wanna just table it till Thursday?
Mm-hmm.
I like the idea of the lead guy supposedly keeping track of the other two.
Well, I have a person that would like to come back, at least one, that I think would be very good in that role, especially with what we're gonna have going on at the cemetery. Mark's gonna be spending a lot of time working on the GIS mapping with Mandy. And the person I had in mind would be, he's very familiar with the cemetery operations and his workforce before, so.
While we're talking about this, is there any, I mean, is there any statutes or anything that says that the utility people, I mean, I know we have on-call, but if, if a part-timer wants to work weekends, evenings, or something like that, is there, is there any issues with that? I mean-
As long as they don't make it so they're considered full-time employment.
Just the hour requirement, as far as total number of hours a week?
Right, we'd wanna keep them under that.
Cause I've also been approached by another, one of our former full-time employees about doing some work.
Right.
And personally, I wouldn't have any problem allowing this person to work evenings or even on the weekends.
The hours when they work aren't the issue, it's the total amount of work done in a given period of time.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
But that'll, can all be worked out, so.
Because if we're working them full-time, we have to treat them like a full-time.
Right, right.
And changing the salary ordinance is not-
No.
Gonna be an issue?
Nope, just need to know what you guys wanna vote on later, and we can do it then.
Okay. All right, project status, water project, I don't have any new info on that. Forty-one North sewer expansion?
I can comment on that a little bit. I talked to the remaining property owner's attorney today, he was out of town. But it had already been relayed to me that they had worked out an agreement with the property owner. So now it's just a matter of getting things finalized and signatures on documents. So our last remaining property owner that we needed authority from is agreeing. And I talked to Structure Point, and they're gonna take care of getting the appropriate signatures or things. But I'm gonna send them Mr. Gooch's attorney's email, cause the attorney expressed that he wants those documents sent through him. But my understanding is everything's gonna go on that front. Structure Point did wanna just a response from the town that we're okay with their new itemized information on that, which just accommodates for some of the changing and the edging around the pond and drainage tiles and things like that that Mr. Gooch had to have for drainage purposes, so that increased the dollar amount to the sixteen thousand. So that's right here is what they emailed me on. So I just want authority from the town to respond to them and give them the information they need so they can proceed forward. They did request that Mr. Gooch provide us an estimate, a written appraisal on the work to be done, cause he said he'd had one. So I'm gonna reach out to Jeff, his attorney, and see if they can give me something in writing as to that appraisal.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make that motion to get that moving, if I can get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye. I, I'm curious about his, what his additional work is. Are we gonna pay for any of this stuff that was?
No, it, it was drainage-related things. Our engineering firm, Structure Point, talked with him directly, I guess, and were able to explain the engineering portions of that with the drainage concerns he had. But the additional compensation from our original cost estimate were what increased it to the dollar amount in the counter offer. So we just had to have something formal for Structure Point's purposes. And so one of the things they asked was a written quote, so I can coordinate with his attorney on that and get that taken care of. But Structure Point may have more documents that they want signed from us, but I haven't received anything yet, so. But they said they'd handle the part with Mr. Gooch directly, but his attorney wants it to go through him, so I'm gonna direct him to him.
Okay, all in favor?
The attorney? Uh, he's ready to sign the minute Structure Point sends the documents, so. So it's just a matter of whatever Structure Point needs.
Once that motion carries?
Yes. Got it.
Sorry, I've been a little bit.
And that was just for Nick to communicate with his attorney correctly, I mean, just-
There were an approval on Structure Point's itemization too, the additional eighty-one hundred in compensation in regards to the drainage issues at that parcel. That was what we needed the authority on, and I can't get that to Structure Point without the board, so.
South Market Street, the right-of-way staking is completed. Did take several phone calls about why the stakes were pretty close to the houses in a lot of situations. And talking with Ken, that's, that's where the temporary right-of-ways are for the driveway entrances, so that they can construct them up into the people's yard pretty good ways, so most people were pretty satisfied with that answer. And Ken and his crew did a good job about reaching out and to email some things from folks too, so I appreciate them working hard on their end as well.
I know we're gonna touch base Thursday with this again, so, I mean, I recommend people tell the public, or at least these guys, if they wanna be involved, because we're gonna have Structure Point, Roger's gonna be here.
Yep.
So, I mean, you know, if people's got questions, now's the time to-
It would be a good time to do that.
I believe it is.
Jefferson Street project, we're also meeting on that this upcoming Thursday at five. We also decided we're not gonna be moving any utility poles in that area. We also kinda decided that what we're gonna do is add an entryway to the thirty-sixth parking lot on the east side of Jefferson Street. And that seemed to satisfy all parties on that. By the time that we get this thing done, that's gonna, it's gonna look real nice down there, so we're excited about that.
Hey, Jeff, I'm gonna email you something for Structure Point, I won't be able to be here Thursday, but they wanted a evocable right-of-entry grant to be signed by the property owners, and I have it done, but I'm gonna email it to you.
Okay, thank you. Does it have the signatures already, or are they gonna execute that?
They're gonna execute that, I think. I, it's got signature pages set up. I just did it as a template because I wasn't certain who needed to sign where or things like that, they've been kinda coordinating that. If I need to add things to it, I certainly can do that, but-
I'll forward it to Ken and then we can, I'll- I'll forward it to Ken, and then we can, uh, also have it there at the meeting on
I can copy him on it to you if you want to.
Yes, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I'll make sure we have copies here to be signed or whatever.
All right.
Jackson Voorhees Pro- uh, Project, uh, the Scoreboard's gonna have a meeting on, uh, March fifteenth, and I wanna say that's at seven o'clock, isn't it? And, uh, Roger's gonna be here to update them on the progress regarding the, uh, the engineering design side on that, and looking forward to hearing how far he's got. I know he's got all of his data points and everything like that. He did, uh, call me last week and asked a couple of questions about, uh, curves and, and designs on those, so it'll be kinda cool to see what he's coming up with. By all means, if you guys would like to attend that, please do. Jackson Jacks Building, uh, we talked about it a li- a little bit tonight. Uh, McCullough's were here at, uh, seven-thirty this morning, brought two, uh, excavators, the building is down, uh, they were making, uh, hauling out some of the bricks and, uh, debris as I left. I think they had about five trucks running back and forth to, uh, wherever, and, uh, they're, they're getting it done. I, I would say probably by the end of this week, you know, if the weather holds out, that project will be done with, so, uh, kudos to them for, for getting right on it. Some of this pertains a little bit more to the Park Board but, uh, than the, uh, the general board, but I'll go ahead and mention some of them also. Beechwood Park Pool House renovation project, the bids are due on three-eleven, which is this Friday. We do the bid opening on March fourteenth. Uh, Nick, if you can be here for the bid opening, that would be a good thing.
I got it on my calendar, March fourteenth.
Great, and, uh, then we'll make a recommendation to the council on three-twenty-one.
That meeting's at six, is that right?
I believe so.
Okay.
That's traditionally when they have those.
That's why I have it on the calendar.
Water main and hydrant replacements are still on the schedule for U-Mac. Uh, Clarifier Project at wastewater treatment plant, um, Bruce, do, do we have any new numbers on rebuild yet?
We do not.
Okay, so that one's still up in the air a little bit?
Yeah, it is up, it was on order.
Okay. The blower replacement though, we do have a little bit of information on that. We have, uh, an attached quote from B.L. Anderson for forty-four thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-five diar- dollars for blower number two, and then Sycamore Engineering for two thousand nine-seventy-eight, uh, for the electrical work on the install. Total would be forty-seven, uh, thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars. Now, I'm gonna let Bruce talk about this a little bit because he feels like there, there may be an opportunity for some cost savings on that. Uh, Bruce, you wanna?
Yeah, our, our blowers are, the new blowers that they put in last year, it's, they put the new blower in, and then they put the new diffusers in the aeration, which don't require near the capacity of air, so we're, we're way oversized down there.
We have a what, a hundred?
We have a hundred horse rotor, and we could probably get by with a fifty. So, I put a freeze in that order, and, um, we're gonna resize that, it's gonna really be a lot cheaper, so. And it's gonna be a cost savings, cause we're not gonna be running a hundred horse compressor down there, cause they're running a fifty horse instead, so.
So, good deal. We like that. Thank you, Bruce. Uh, roof repair at Beechwood Park Pool House, still waiting on an estimate from Levi Fisher. He did call me tonight, he's gonna be over there tomorrow to take a look at the building, and that's for a pitched metal roof. Uh, I also talked to Mike Lindsay, uh, Lindsay Construction, see if, if he was interested in that as well. He said he wouldn't mind taking a look at it, but I haven't heard back from him yet, so, uh, hopefully I can get a couple of numbers together for the Park Board on him. Lights and crossarms at the ballfield, uh, talking to Musco and Acuity on, uh, replacement lights. Uh, Brett's kinda concerned about the condition of the poles, and obviously, we know that the crossarms are not very good. Whether or not we're able to do anything with the lights themselves, we don't know, but we can definitely, uh, change out the crossarms, and that's on, on Brett's work list, so we'll do what we can on that. Drainage and ballfields, waiting for Zach and company to let us know where we can do some trenching. Beechwood Park Pavilion, uh, still waiting to hear back from Sam Tisi on estimates for painting on that, and I'm guessing, uh, I'm thinking about seven thousand dollars to, to completely strip that old paint off, put in a good weather protectant, and, uh, seal it up real good, and then put a couple of good coats of, of high-quality latex on there because it's, it's in need. Another interesting thing is I've got, uh, some numbers for decorative light replacements at Beechwood Park. We have a couple of our light poles down by the walking trail, uh, that have had globes knocked off of them or knocked out with rocks or that kinda thing. We have one electrical, uh, unit that's completely, uh, shot, and the numbers on those are very, uh, well, I feel very reasonable to replace, so I'm gonna present that to the, the Park Board also and see if we can get a couple of those fixed up and just do them as we go along. Uh, I think it'll be a good deal. New Hope, Cody is building the water meters, they're all dug out, we'll have those in by the end of the week, uh, so that would just leave us one transformer and one more sewer tap to make down there.
What's the story with the fire hydrant down there? I just happened to take a ride down through there the other day, and that hydrant looks like it's either, I mean, either the, the main is in there like this, or?
It, it, it may not be exactly.
Well, I mean, I'm not worried about north and south, but east and west, it's like, it's sticking out like ground or something like that, I'm like.
Wh- when they were in there, they had to dig out some of the water, I think that's right in that area, so they may have lost a little bit, but I think we can get it squared back around. Transfer switch, uh, quote for the wastewater treatment plant from Sycamore Engineering, and this is, when you say the transfer switch, that's what kicks, uh, the generators on from the regular electricity to the generators, and that thing came in at thirty-seven thousand four-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars from Sycamore Engineering, and, uh, again, that's a pretty su- pretty good size chunk of change. Our wastewater treatment plant has been pretty costly this year, unfortunately. And that is all I have.
Is that switch been approved already, or is that something you need?
We haven't approved it.
Are you going to need to get it coming?
Bruce, wh- what's your take on that?
My, my take is, um, we need to get that approved and get it installed before the spring storms hit.
Good.
Because I'm telling you what, it's, uh, pretty scary standing in three foot of water down there throwing that transfer switch and storming out. Anybody don't blame me can come up anytime I do it.
Yeah, I mean, is, can we get a motion on?
I'll make a motion.
It's, it's pretty scary down there when the bear's out.
I'll make a motion.
You want a second, Steve?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jeff?
Yes.
Those, the light poles down forty-one?
Yes.
Those, the?
The bases?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I've gotta work on them.
I just didn't know if they were, okay, okay.
I tried to use a, uh, cotton adhesive for those little plates that go on the front and back end of the electrical access, they didn't work real well, so I've gotta figure out some.
Okay.
How about you all, you know, build something, usually progress too.
So we put a hold on the blower for now, so what do we need to do? I mean.
Uh, you guys can go ahead and approve if we're gonna go ahead and do it this year or not, but I don't have a final bid yet.
Okay.
Final price yet.
Okay.
It'll be less than the price that's proposed, I think.
Well, I mean, we're, I mean, we'll approve it whenever, or we'll vote on it, and.
Yeah, let's, let's get the numbers, and we'll get the toll from Sycamore.
I'm trying to get that done soon.
So, and I think that's all I have. Uh, you guys have any questions for me or concerns?
You, Randy, Randy?
Uh, the two remaining vests, uh, body armor have been, um, are gonna be paid for by the Park County Prosecutor, that makes a total of three. Everybody's vests will be taken care of now. Um, the grant application for the vest plates, we're still waiting on response from Marathon Pipeline Company on that. The new hire process, we're just waiting on, uh, Perf seventy-seven, plan to approve the new hire, and it should be coming by the end of the week.
So she's not working yet?
No, no. She's done some training as a re- as a reserve, so that she's getting some of her training ahead of time and getting it done, uh, so that's been good too. I've got no update or heard nothing back from the state on the body camera grant either. Um, her, uh, the new hires, uh, physical and psychological exam went really well with the company that we've had, um, dealt with before, they were able to get her in in a couple of days, and they got the results back in a week, which was fantastic compared to the three months we had processed, we had the last couple ones. But that cost was fifteen-hundred-and-twenty-one oh four, so, uh, I was requesting if you couldn't take that out of that salary that hasn't been used for the last few months and transfer that over, um, for her to pay for that.
It's just a fund transfer, but I'd like for you guys to vote on that.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm applying for Narcan Grant to replace a older supply of, uh, from the State Department of Health. I've given you, uh, copies of the monthly reports for January and February here. Um, I will tell you that, um, from the statistics from the computerated dispatch program, um, Rockville Police Department had in those two, last two months, four-hundred-and-eighty-nine calls, uh, as compared to the Sheriff's Department, eight-hundred-and-seventy-nine calls, we're running about sixty percent of the calls that what volume that they're having, but we're doing it with half the guys, so I think we're doing pretty good. Um, Utility Department's been great help on, uh, helping us with, uh, vehicle maintenance and stuff, so that's going pretty well. Um, right now, they're taking the dog cage out of the, uh, old K-nine vehicle force and put the seats back in it, so it'll be ready to go when the new hire's ready, and that's about all I have.
All right. Any questions? Comments? Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Ready?
Yeah, I just wanted to correct what I said, I said it was a fund transfer, it's not, it's within the same fund, it's just the general salary moving it to the general police line, so it's not gonna require any resolution, just a vote, so I won't need anything additional on that. Um, I have claims for one twenty-two eighty-four oh one. Anybody has any questions, you should have an account payable register there for those.
Anybody have any questions on that? Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Say that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I, uh, here, I've got, um, do you have an additional one there for payroll? It's kind of a last-minute thing, but it's, it's all payroll for seventy-nine thousand three eighty-one fourteen. Do you have another one of these or not? It's all, it's just payroll, that was the end of the month, we didn't have a closeout for the end of February, so there is an additional claim register for that dollar amount, it's, and it's just all payroll. Um, there's no other bills or anything within that.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And then the only other thing, we do have four of the CDs renewing, um, just wanna have an approval in minutes, but we're gonna continue to let those mature, and we do get those interest received back in by checks, um, from the interest on those CDs.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nick?
Um, I just had one additional thing, this is a resolution adopting, uh, fee schedule for the Rockville Police Department, uh, is something we've been working on, Randy and I had, but, um, has, uh, different fees that currently, um, some of these are not being charged where other communities have been charging for these services, so this would just make us fall in line with other communities surrounding. Um, so, uh, and then, you know, there's one in here or two in here where we have been charging a fee by a prior, um, resolution or ordinance, but, so it has a fee for production of accident and incident reports, a twelve dollars per report, uh, copies of the town code of ordinances for fifty cents per standard page, road closure permit fees, ten dollars per day, subject to closure approval of the town council, copying fee of public records, fifty cents per standard page, twenty cents per page fax, five dollars for email, five dollars for certification of records, criminal history report, seven dollars, VIN record check, five dollars per vehicle, vehicle in-town fee of fifty dollars, residential commercial security alarm response fee of five dollars per incident. So, so again, these are things that we hadn't been necessarily charging for our services on, but other communities have been, um, so this, this would adopt those fees if, if the council.
Just make a motion on, uh, Resolution twenty, twenty-two?
Dash whatever.
Dash O-two, I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Where's that go to then?
Do.
Which fund?
Public Safety.
Of just the Public Safety?
It's gonna help you to fund Public Safety.
Can I go back from there or not? I mean, would I, well, of course not, since I've got accident reports.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not a, uh, fund that will revert back to general fund at the end of the year, it's just a.
But this is something other communities typically charge fees on, it just makes us all in line with some bigger communities.
Uh, yeah, I just didn't know where it would.
God, will these speak to us? We have to.
Those fees, um, they would be collected at the time of service.
Yeah.
So like if we get out on a bank check or things like that, they would have to pay. Otherwise, we'd have no good name, we'd have no.
Well, I wasn't sure.
I would assume that the best practice would probably be have them come up here and pay.
Absolutely. We don't, guys aren't gonna, they can pay it online.
Right.
Like their other records, and if they bring us a receipt, then we could do it that way, but like the, um, title checks and stuff can be scheduled Monday through Friday. I mean, if they pay it online and have the receipt, then we could do them at any time. But want all of it be paid here or not.
So is that like, I go on paper and then?
When does that take effect then?
It, it can be effective now, it's not a punishment or fine or things like that, you have to publish when they are those things, but this is just a resolution by the council adopting a fee schedule. Um, if, if we were punishing in action, you have to publish.
It wasn't like have to, it just for public knowledge if they wanna VIN check.
So it'd be effective as of today.
So we probably should put something in the paper about it?
I mean, it's just for their knowledge.
We're changing something that historically has just been a, you know, free service, just so they know.
Do you have a comment, Kevin?
Yeah, and not speaking for the Police Commission, but just because of being involved in some of this stuff, is the only thing I would, I would have, I'd like to speak with John, the rest of the board about, is that that five-dollar alarm fee, an hour of this officer's time is worth more than five bucks to go, to go jack with it. I think that's, I mean, fifteen years ago when I was doing it, it was a hundred bucks after the first time, so I think a five-dollar fee, that's, I mean, shoot, I'll let you guys come and ask my alarm poles all night long.
It probably could be a escalating fee, uh, which should help motivate people to get their alarm fixed.
But five bucks, I mean.
Yeah.
That, that's, so this mirror is something out of another community, Vigo County, um, I'm not.
Farmersburg?
Huh?
Farmersburg, maybe?
Terre Haute.
Terre Haute.
Five bucks, I mean.
Right.
I'd have to talk to John those guy, but I just think that's totally.
That's just what Terre Haute was doing, so that's where that number came from.
But it probably can be readressed as a, cause we do have some places that we get alarms to all the time, and it's, why don't you get it fixed?
Well, if you wanna pay five bucks, why?
Then it's not gonna be a big deal to them.
Close your four-hour fix, and you lost five dollars.
So what, what I would say is that if there are things that the commission or other people wanna tweak on this, it's something we can change.
Good, okay.
people wanna tweak on this, it's something we can change, but it's good to have it in place so we can at least start somewhere with some of these numbers. Public safety funding from the state and government and things of that nature being what they are, you know?
You guys have a meeting at the end of March too?
Monday, four.
Um, I mean, we'll go ahead and move forward with this and I'll go ahead and distribute a copy, but if you are okay with me waiting to publish until you guys, that way we're not...
That, that's John, he's the chairman, I'm not saying I'm speaking for them, just saying because we involved those fees, we talked about it and inter-board about it, is it maybe give him a chance to talk to the rest of the...
And I'll forward it to him tomorrow as well. I'm just thinking, why publish it, you know, next week's paper?
And then all of a sudden it goes up, uh, three hundred percent.
If you guys are wanting possibly bringing in's to...
I hear you, yeah.
And if there are additions to that, this is just something Randy and I had kinda worked on, trying to get something on the books to address some of these things that are services being provided that other communities typically charge for. And those numbers vary community to community too.
Email me, please. I will.
That's all I had as far as report wise. We have ordinances moving forward and some small claims moving forward, but most of my time's been spent on these contracts that we've been messing with, so.
Good.
Did we come up with a policy reference towing, so now that we charge a fifty dollar in-town fee?
Correct, that's in this.
Okay.
What was that here?
That's gonna be coming too.
For betas.
Like, yeah, I meant on the...
So, yeah, I've gotta get it with the record company to let them know what's going on and stuff.
That was done through the zoning board. They, there was a property that they were using as a multi-family residence previously and they acquired this property, so they wanted to just formalize it and the zoning board did approve that request. It was consented to by all the neighboring properties, but that, that was at the zoning.
I didn't know if you had anything that I needed here, that's why I put that on there.
Um, that was signed and is in possession of the, whoever the clerk is or the secretary for the zoning commission. They have the signed copy.
Okay, and I did not mean to put the request...
But they, they did approve that request at their meeting.
Right, I didn't mean to put Randy's request under your stuff.
Oh, no, that's okay.
We had, we had a couple of property violations that he was getting into court, but it was miscommunication on my part that I'd already talked to the people and they're working on straightening those out, so we put off court on those two.
There was a third one though that we are proceeding on.
Yeah, yeah.
But those, those two, they are starting to become compliant, it looks like, so.
And the, the police commission minutes from the last meeting are ready for you, but I think I, when I looked at them a little bit ago, I've got the wrong date.
Okay.
At the top, so I've gotta adjust the date and have them re-sign it, so we'll have those for you. But that's, we have an English, retired English teacher on the police commission, you know, so she corrects all my...
They don't, they don't ever actually retire, though.
No, they don't, no. No, they're like Marines.
All right. You guys done?
That's all I have, yeah.
Good, thanks, Nick. Cindy?
Yes, two quick questions and then, well, I have three. Two quick, one not so quick. Jeff, have you ever heard back from anybody on the prison project?
No.
Any kind of agreement?
No, I could touch base with that gentleman from, oh, CPA, who's heard that really, the representative of state, you know, with contracts, and he said he would...
Mass exit. Cindy's gonna talk a lot about that.
He know how to clear a room.
Don't come to me first next time.
But he said he would bring that back up again. I'll touch base with him and see where he's at on that.
Curious if they would, if they're willing to do anything and pitch anything in towards the project as we're putting this grant request together.
For the watering?
Yes, yes, for water.
Oh, I'm trying to think what that little thing is. I've got this card on my desk because I had to dig it out.
Yeah, so the OKRA round for projects opens up next Tuesday. Proposals are due April twenty-ninth, so we have to have our plan together and submit it by April twenty-ninth, so I wanna get working on that. So that's why I was trying to find out on the financial side and make sure I have everything where we want it to be, so that's my longer question. And the second, for the sewer project going north, since the eminent domain seems to be wrapping up, I don't know if you guys wanna ask or if you want me to ask, if Structure Point has any timeline for that project, assuming in the next month that they give this, they might already stuck that up.
If you don't mind, I wouldn't mind if you talk to them.
Okay.
I mean...
I'll ask Brian. I don't, I don't mind, it's just, I'm just curious of timeline and I'm asking for redevelopment commission meeting that's scheduled in a couple of weeks, just so that we can give that update to them.
You want me to shoot you an email and ask for an updated timeline on it?
Whoever wants to do it, I mean...
I can do that. I'll CC everybody.
Okay. Thanks, I'm breaking so long, here's my stand, way back here, yells, I'm here, just be careful.
I was gonna say, watch your...
I won't lean back.
No, you're just sitting on the floor.
I just wanna make sure that this is the most current water plan. That was the April one. Does that look familiar, Jeff? It was marked as final.
Let me check with Roger.
Okay, so this was August of twenty-twenty-one.
I think Cody has updated a few things with Roger.
Okay, 'cause I'll need any updated details. We write our narrative for the grant. And in that plan, Roger had a total project cost with construction and non-construction of two million, five hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. And that was including grant administration, any legal or legal counsel required, so that should be like just everything that would touch that project. But what we talked about last time and you guys gave me the okay to do was to submit for OKRA, which would be a max of seven hundred thousand, to also submit to SRF and see if they would do any grant loan portion of that and then five hundred thousand from ARP. And then I looked at Park's project list, his paper here, and just saw where he was pulling, you know, like out of water and like cash reserve, basically to make up that difference. So what we'll try to do is just frame this in the way that we'll try to get the most benefits we can from SRF without going to outside loans and then the town, I guess, absorbing the rest of the total cost, whatever's not covered by grant. So I just wanna make sure everybody's good with that strategy before I move forward and Jeff will confirm that we have the latest and greatest.
How staggered do you think that'll be coming in, I mean?
Well, the OKRA one, so the proposers are, proposals are April, um, hang on, I got my paper here somewhere. They are, the applications due in June, awards August twelfth. So we'll find out in August on OKRA. SRF applications are due in July. So I don't know when their announced date is, but they oughta be fairly close, I would think, in coming in, so that then you guys can make plans and decisions on, based on what comes through. Cause it'll take a while for OKRA to get the granted, you know, if awarded, the contract agreement to you and in the meantime, like just delay or take, you know, however much time we can until we hear from SRF and see what happens.
I just don't wanna get into a funding issue like, you know, I mean, we're waiting and somebody's gonna yank.
Oh, no, once they commit, I mean, OKRA, they're, I mean, the dollars that they're offering now have already been committed.
Okay.
I mean, to them as an agency to then distribute unless some catastrophe happens, but we're just, I, I'm trying to lessen the amount coming out of the town's money by using SRF if we can help in any way. And also with the SRF grant, and again, this isn't due till July, but I'm assuming that you'll wanna continue using Steve Brock as your rate consultant, cause that's right who you guys have been using for that, okay? Cause I have to indicate who all of those people are. And Nick, you'll take care of all legal counsel required on any of these documents?
Sure.
I have to put, I have to put legal counsel, I have to put all of these names on the application. It's a...
Board member.
Well, there are, you can, and that's up to the council to him, you guys can talk about it, but we can put in some additional cost for legal fees, you know, as part of the overall project, if that's over and above.
You're perking up now.
I'm trying, Nick. I really am. But I mean, you can account for that within the project.
So those things are time consuming, but that's...
They are.
That's up to...
You told us.
I mean, we're designating funding towards legal counsel. I just wanna know if it's Nick's name and...
Well, I'm a reverend, yeah, I mean, assuming you want me to look at it.
Yeah, yeah. All right. I think that gets me what I need. And then Jeff's gonna check on the other. That's it.
A lot of irons in the fire these days.
Well, that's why I ask before I assume.
Yep, no.
On there.
That was easy.
Ran anybody away though, but, sorry. I think they were watching me fill out this other paperwork I was doing back there and thinking, oh, boy.
They seen that stagger and like, no, I'm not sticking around for that. Well, I mean, Bruce left, so you Mac obviously doesn't have anything, any new business other than...
Nobody's, nobody's left.
Jeff already had his chance, you can't ask again.
There's no public left, so. I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second for adjournment?
Second.
Steve?
All in favor?
I didn't hear it.
All in favor?
Aye.